Good evening and welcome to the May 20th, 2025 regularly scheduled meeting of the Nacogdoches City Council. Mr. Mall, would you lead us in prayer, please?
So will. Heavenly Father, I come in your son's name to thank you for being all-powerful, all-knowing, everywhere-present, unchanging, and merciful. And I am especially thankful today for the historical marker that was put at the Taylor, Durs Taylor House because it shows our historic town in a wonderful light. I was also very grateful that we had three new police officers sworn in today, and in Jesus Christ's name I pray, amen.
Amen. If you'll stand for the pledges, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, next item on the agenda is open forum, and there being none, we'll go to awards and recognitions. Item A, 4A, consider the approval of a resolution canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the Nacogdoches General Election held on May 3rd, 2025 by the County of Nacogdoches. Rhonda.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Rhonda Lewis, City Secretary. Today, I'm going to be reading into record the results of the May 3rd, 2025 General Election. And directly following, I'm asking for a vote from your council for the resolution declaring those results. This year, the residents of the city of Nacogdoches voted to elect the seats for mayor, the Northeast Ward and the Northwest Ward. Councilwoman Bellinger ran unopposed and received 732 votes, total cast votes, in the Northeast Ward race. Congratulations to her. Councilman Mall ran unopposed as well for the Northeast Ward and received 322 of the total cast votes. Sorry, I'm lacking here. And for the mayor's race, drew an opponent for the seat of mayor, Ms. Bridgette Kozash, the opponent, received 776 votes, whereas Randy Johnson received 1,257 votes and declared the winner. So I'd like to congratulate you all on your successful campaigns and winning your elections. Thank you. Now, for the resolution, I'd like a vote, please, if there are no questions regarding the votes.
If I could, I'd like to congratulate my colleagues on their reelection and make a motion that we adopt the resolution canvassing the returns and declaring results of the City Council General Election for Mayor at Large Northeast Ward and Northwest Ward as presented.
Second. We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item will be Rhonda to administer the statement of officer and oath of office to the mayor and council members.
Ms. Bellinger? I'm going to read the statement of officer first. Please raise your right hand. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Kathleen Bellinger.
Do solemnly swear that I have not
Do solemnly swear that I have not
directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised
Directly or indirectly paid, offered, or promised.
contributed or promised to contribute
Contributed or promised to contribute.
any money or thing of value
Any money or thing of value.
or promised any public officer
Or promised any public officer.
or employment for the giving or withholding
Or employment for the giving or withholding.
of a vote at the election at which I was elected
Of a vote at the election at which I was elected.
Sorry. Or as a reward
Or as a reward.
to secure my appointment or confirmation
To secure my appointment or confirmation.
whichever the case may be
Whichever the case may be.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Please keep your hand up. I'm going to read the oath of office now. And aye, please state your name.
Aye, Kathleen Bellinger.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will faithfully execute
That I will faithfully execute.
the duties of the office of
The duties of the office of
councilmember of the Northeast Ward
Councilmember of the Northeast Ward.
of the state of Texas
Of the state of Texas.
and will to the best of my ability
And will to the best of my ability.
preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend.
the Constitution and laws of the United States
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
and of this state, so help me God.
And of this state, so help me God.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
We didn't need all this smooching.
I bet you're talking to Tom.
No. This'll be fun. No. This is a surprise. She didn't know.
You look great.
And please raise your right hand when I go through this again. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Brad Mall.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I have not directly or indirectly paid
That I have not directly or indirectly paid
offered
Offered.
promised to pay
Promised to pay.
contribute or promised
Contribute or promise.
to the contribute any money or thing of value
To contribute any money or thing of value.
or promised any public office or employment
Or promised any public office or employment.
for the giving or withholding of a vote
For the giving or withholding of a vote.
at the election at which I was elected.
At the election at which I was elected.
or as a reward to secure my appointment
Or as a reward to
Secure my appointment. or confirmation
Or confirmation.
whichever the case may be
Whichever the case may be.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. And we'll read the oath of office. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Brad Mall.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will faithfully execute
That I will faithfully execute.
the duties of the office of
The duties of the office of
councilmember of the Northwest Ward
Councilman of the Northwest Ward.
of the state of Texas
Of the state of Texas.
and will to the best of my ability
And will to the best of my ability.
preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend.
the Constitution and laws
Constitution and laws.
of the United States, of this state.
Of the United States and of this state.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you so much, and congratulations. You have to raise your right hand or push your hand. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Randy Johnson.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I have not directly or indirectly paid
That I have not directly or indirectly paid
offered, promised to pay
Offered, promised to pay.
contribute
Contribute.
or promised to contribute
Or promised to contribute.
any money or thing of value
Any money or thing of value.
or promised any public office or employment
Or promised any public office or employment.
for the giving or withholding of a vote
For the giving or withholding of a vote.
at the election at which I was elected
At the election of which I was elected.
or as a reward to secure my appointment
Or as a reward to secure my appointment.
or confirmation
Or confirmation.
whichever the case may be
Whichever the case may be.
so help me God.
So help me God.
And we'll do the oath of office now, please. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Randy Johnson.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will faithfully execute the duties of my office
That I will faithfully execute the duties of my office.
of mayor at large
Of mayor at large.
of the state of Texas
Of the state of Texas.
and will to the best of my ability
And to the best of my ability.
preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend.
the Constitution and laws of the United States
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
and of this state
And of this state.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you so much, congratulations.
Okay. All right, next item is consider the appointment of a mayor pro tem. This is just a little housekeeping and vice mayor pro tem. I'd like to nominate Chad Huckleby as mayor pro tem. Do I have a second? Second. Have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I'm abstaining.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that's a vote in favor, right?
That's an abstention, but you can record it how you want.
Okay, it's a vote in favor. Okay. All right. I'd also like to nominate Brad Mall as vice mayor pro tem.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay. There it is. Okay, next item. Item 4D, recognize and present a proclamation to lumberjack Harley Davidson for the Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. Councilman Mall.
This is very heartfelt on your part, I know. So whereas the Lone Star State is home to one of the nation's largest motorcycle riding populations, and today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling, whereas in 2024, 571 riders lost their lives on Texas roadways, two of those lives
Thank you. Two of those lives were lost in Nacogdoches County. Therefore, it is vital that all motorists become more aware of those they share the road with, especially motorcyclists. And whereas each year, the month of May is dedicated to awareness campaigns that combat motorcycle-related crashes and fatalities, it is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to remain cognizant of motorcyclists and to obey all traffic laws. And whereas motorists are encouraged to be well-informed of the inherent dangers involved in operating a motorcycle, and for riders and motorists alike, to give each other the mutual respect they deserve. Now, therefore, it be it proclaimed that the mayor, Randy Johnson, of the city of Nacogdoches, and little old Brad Mall here, on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize May 25th as the Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens of Nacogdoches, Texas, to learn more about motorcycle safety. Congratulations.
Look twice, save a life. It really helps. Look left, look right, then look left again, because most crashes happen when a driver will pull out by not realizing that there's a motorcycle right there as they're turning left. I see people do this all the time on the loop, especially where there's a wall. They're looking right. Here I come, and like, they're not seeing me, but I see them. So that's our slogan.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you very much for doing that.
Yeah, let's do it.
That's Kevin Meaford.
We got a hole through here.
We got a hole through.
Oh, look. That's great.
Oh.
There you go.
Okay, we'll get back to business. Next item on the agenda is the items to be removed from the consent agenda.
Make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Consent agenda is approved. Now, the regular agenda. First item is a public hearing. First item, discuss and consider action on zoning case ZO-N 2025-04 regarding a zone change from R2 Single Family to B2 General Business District on four parcels of land, approximately 2.0 acres, plus or minus in size. More particularly described by Nacogdoches Central Appraisal District Parcels 241-34, 241-35, 241-36, and 32772. And from B1 Local Business to B2 General Business District on four parcels of land, approximately 1.44 acres, plus or minus acres in size. More particularly described by Nacogdoches Central Appraisal District Parcels 32768, 32769, 32770, and 32771. It is generally located on the north side of West Seal Street, near a property located at 803 West Seal Street. Mr. Paulette.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Juan Paulette, Enorm City Planner. Before I begin, I just want to point out that this item and the next item were both submitted by the same applicant, Mr. Clem Russell of Bright Coop. And because there are multiple zone changes involved in this request, we decided to split it into two separate items, so it'd make it easier to follow. This item addresses properties to the north of West Seal, which is where the employee parking is located. And the next item is all the changes on the south side of West Seal, which is where the main office and manufacturing area are located. So these properties are located on the north side of West Seal and consist of eight parcels totaling approximately 3.4 acres, which are currently being used as employee parking. The adjacent area is zoned single-family and industrial, and is developed primarily with single-family homes and light industrial to the south. Of the eight parcels, four are currently zoned R2 Single Family, and four are zoned B1 Local Business. The applicant is requesting that they rezone all eight parcels to B2 General Business to comply with the current zoning regulations and the existing use. The future land use plan designates the subject properties as single-family residential. The future land use category is described as conventional one-family detached dwellings, which also include duplexes. Although the future land use designation does not align with the requested B2 General Business District, the requested change reflects current longstanding use of the properties as employee parking for Bright Coop. And here's a picture of the employee parking area on the north side of West Seal, and some a picture of the adjacent property to the east and west. And this slide shows the types of uses within the 200-foot notification area. Staff sent out 24 public meeting notices to property owners, and 31 notice postcards to property owners within 200 and 500 feet of the subject property. Staff have received no written responses in opposition or in favor of the request. Staff coordinated a neighborhood meeting for property owners within 500 feet of the subject property on April 16th. Four of the neighboring residents attended the meeting with concerns that their property was also going to get rezoned. Once clarified, the residents weren't opposed to the zone change. Staff believes that although this request does not meet some of the conditions for approval, given the longstanding industrial presence in the area and the existing use of the property, the request may be considered a reasonable deviation that aligns zoning with current use and allows for standalone parking. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve the request on May 12th, and I'll be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Do I have any input from the audience? If there being none, we'll close the public hearing for discussion, if any, or a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the zoning request outlined in item 7A as written.
A second. Have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, 7B, public hearing. Discuss and consider action on zoning case ZO-N 2025-05 regarding a zone change from R4 Multi-Family to I1 Light Industrial on one parcel of land, approximately 0.8 acres, plus or minus in size. More particularly described by Nacogdoches Central Appraisal District Parcel 77103. And from A Agricultural to I1 Light Industrial on seven parcels of land, approximately 3.0 acres, plus or minus in size. More particularly described by Nacogdoches Central Appraisal District Parcels 28784 and 78740. And from R2 Single Family to I1 Light Industrial on three parcels of land, approximately 3 acres, plus or minus in size. More particularly described by Nacogdoches County Central Appraisal Parcels 81014, 32737, and 32738. And is generally located south of West Seal Street, near a property located at 803 West Seal Street. Mr. Paulette.
Thank you, Mayor. Juan Paulette, Enorm City Planner. This zone change request covers 11 parcels located at or near 803 West Seal Street. The area includes Bright Coop's main office and primary manufacturing facilities. Bright Coop has gradually expanded its operations in this area since 1951, and the proposed zone change corresponds with the current use of site. The adjacent area is zoned with a mix of single-family, two-family, multifamily, commercial, and agricultural uses. Most of the property is located at 803 West Seal. It's currently zoned light industrial, which is appropriate for the existing uses. At the southwest end of Reed Street, west of the main property, Bright Coop owns one parcel zoned R4 multifamily and seven parcels zoned agricultural. East of the main property, Bright Coop owns three smaller parcels zoned R2 single-family. In order to create a cohesive zoning designation that reflects existing and intended uses of the property, the applicant is requesting that all of these parcels be rezoned to light The future land use plan designates the west half of the subject properties as rural development and the east half as single-family residential. While these designations do not align with the requested light industrial district, the requested zoning is consistent with Bright Coop's adjacent industrial uses. Staff finds that this request is not in compliance with the future land use plan. However, the longstanding industrial use of the site and adjacent zoning and development patterns, the request may be reviewed as a logical zoning adjustment reflective of existing conditions. Some pictures of the main office area and manufacturing area on the left, and the southern end of Reed Street, which is where the seven agricultural lots are located, and the one R4 multifamily lot. This slide shows the types of uses within the 200-foot notification area. Staff sent out 28 public meeting notices to those property owners and have received no written responses in favor or in opposition of the request. Staff combined neighborhood meetings for this item and the previous item on April 18th, and there was no opposition. Staff believes that although this request does not meet some of the conditions for approval, the proposed zoning brings those properties into alignment with adjacent industrial zoning and operations, eliminates zoning inconsistencies, and reflects a longstanding development pattern in the area. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on May 12th, and I'll be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Okay, we'll now open the hearing for discussion. Anybody in the audience have any comment? If not, we'll close the forum and go to council discussion, if any, or a motion.
I do have one thing I wanted to say, and that's to thank not just Bright Coop, but also Mr. Russell for all that y'all do for our community. And then I'm ready to make a motion.
Sure.
Okay, I'd like to move that we approve the zoning request outlined in item 7B.
Second. Have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, 7C, public hearing. Discuss and consider action on zoning case ZO-N 2025-06 regarding a zone change from B1 Local Business to R1 Single Family District on three parcels of land, approximately 0.74 acres, plus or minus in size. More particularly described by Nacogdoches Central Appraisal District Parcels 28220, 28221, and 28222. And generally located on the north side of East Austin Street, west of the intersection of East Austin Street and Appleby Sand Road. Mr. Paulette.
Thank you, Mayor. Juan Paulette, Enorm City Planner. These properties are located on the north side of East Austin Street, near the intersection of East Austin and Appleby Sand Road. The three properties total approximately 3/4 of an acre and are undeveloped. The applicant, Gary Striplin, plans to re-subdivide the parcels to create uniform lot widths and construct three single-family homes. The area is primarily zoned single-family, with B1 Local Business adjacent to the east and south of the subject properties. The future land use plan designation of the subject property is a single-family residential. Single-family residential future land use category is described as conventional one-family detached dwellings, which also include duplexes, and R1 meets this comprehensive plan. Here's a picture of the subject property from East Austin, and then adjacent properties to the west and east. This slide shows the types of uses within the 200-foot notification area. Staff sent out 11 public meeting notices to those property owners, and 30 notice postcards to property owners within 200 and 500 feet of the subject properties, and staff has not received any written requests in opposition or in favor. Staff believes that this request meets the conditions for approval. Planning and zoning recommended approval on this item on May 12th, and I'll be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
This is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing now. Does anybody in the audience have anything to say? There being none, we'll close the public hearing and discussion with a council or a motion.
I have a question, and it may be for Case, or it may be for you. I bet you can guess my question about drainage.
Sorry, scooting over in my seat.
All right. I just want to know how we're handling it and all that, the drainage, and if this is going to end.
Yeah, so Mayor, Council, City, sorry, this is a little too high for me. Case Opferman, Director of Public Works, City Engineer. Yes, we are making good progress on the design for not only the eastern portion of that back lot line on Colonial Hills, but also in the rear of these properties in consideration as well. This is part of the larger ARPA drainage project, and so it's coming along nicely on the design. Actually, it was nearing finalization, and we asked them to consider a couple more things on their design, just for expanding what they were doing. And so that's being adjusted currently, and hopefully, within the next few months, if we can get all the easements that back lot line on Colonial Hills, but also in the rear of these properties in consideration as well. This is part of the larger ARPA drainage project, and so it's coming along nicely on the design. Actually, it's, it was nearing finalization, and we asked them to consider a couple more things on their design, just for expanding what they were doing. And so that's, that's being adjusted currently, and hopefully, within the next few months, if we can get all the easements that we need, that we'll be able to start construction.
So these three houses, you think they're not going to add to the drainage issues? Or are we going to require anything?
Well, the, the design, if, if it does contribute to it, which we would expect it to be minimal, if any, because those properties do slope a good bit to the front, but there is a little bit that goes to the back. But all that to say, we do have area inlets and piping that basically catches drainage from those lots, and basically takes those around to Colonial Drive. So the design is considering development of these lots.
Got your word for it, so.
We, we've been in pretty constant communication with the designers on the project, trying to make sure that it is the best we can do.
Well, thank you for all your work on it, and thank you for staying on top of it always.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other discussion? I'll make a motion if you guys are ready. I make a motion that we approve zoning case ZO in 2025-06 regarding a zone change from B1, local business, to R1, single-family district, on three parcels of land. So I move that we approve it.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item. Mr. Striplin, did you have anything to say? Okay, next item, item 7D, public hearing. Consider amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Nacogdoches, Texas, including Chapter 118 zoning, Article 2, Administration, Division 4. Amendment procedure to require pre-application meetings for all zoning-related changes. Require a minimum of 15-day notice of public hearings. Clarify zoning designation procedures upon annexation. Clarify the city council's authority to impose conditions on certain zoning actions, and improve the organization and clarity of the chapter. Mr. New.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike New, Executive Director of Development and Infrastructure. Tonight's item, requested ordinance changes, follows some discussion from our zoning ordinance subcommittee and previous discussions of council and Planning and Zoning Commission. If you'll recall, the August 24 workshop was a broader discussion about a number of zoning ordinance changes and considerations. So we gathered at council's request, a subcommittee representative of the council, the zoning board of adjustment, and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Since then, there have been four separate meetings of the subcommittee and several actions to follow, and council has subsequently taken action in several areas of the zoning ordinance. This requested change follows some additional discussion of that subcommittee, specifically focusing on some alignments with other areas of the chapter, as well as what, what we see in the planning office in practice as basically a best practice, and requests for, for changes to the code. I did want to remind the council that any changes that are approved by the council, we are reflecting on our website. What I've included here on this table is just to show you some of the history of, of changes that council has approved since even November. We'll continue to do this to make sure that we're representing to the public, being transparent about these changes as they're approved, but also as a guide for any potential applicants to follow, and make sure that they're meeting requirements, as do we. Specifically within this section, we have focused on a number of items. I will call your attention to the very first one, pre-application conference. This is simply a discussion between staff and prospective applicants regarding any interested project. So before they spend money to submit an application, before there's work done, or work requested of the applicant to provide to the city, we're simply going through what our requirements are, what the process is, so that there's no surprises to the applicant or to staff when an application comes forward for proposed site development, or a zone change request, or anything related to that. We found that incorporating this requirement, rather than a recommendation within the code, establishing it as a requirement, helps facilitate our communication with applicants and provide for this meeting, which in essence provides a win-win for staff and for applicants, so that we can save time and most likely money when discussing projects with them. In addition, notice of public hearings, we're trying to align council notice with Planning and Zoning Commission notice. Typically, the two are aligned together with many of our items that we bring forward for consideration. So the 15-day provides additional, additional requirement on the staff, but is something that we're already trying to meet in practice. So this simply brings council and Planning and Zoning Commission notices together with the same requirement. Joint public hearings, we've made a slight change to that, only to reflect meeting the notification timelines to be consistent with other sections. And then zoning, another major change, other than just reorganizing some of the sections, that's why a lot of the red lines you see on the back end are struck out, we're simply moving those up. This provides some specification to what the default zoning would be upon annexation. We're not seeing as much of that now, that legislation has preempted us in many ways, but this simply cleans that up to say and establish that if there is an annexation, whether it be voluntary, most likely voluntary today, we are establishing a base zoning district of agriculture, and a separate action would be required to request a change to a different zoning district. So we're clearing that language up, so that there's no, no gray or no ambiguity there. And then in Section 118, 139, because we've added that initial section, this simply defines that council's conditional authority applies to very specific requests, not straight-up zoning, so that there's no ambiguity in interpreting potentially zone change requests to be conditional upon council's approval. That is, that is following state law. So these changes are a lot of cleanup, but also some, I think some proposals to allow, give staff and applicants that bring forward projects the ability to communicate better together. And I'll answer any questions after the public hearing.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Any comment from the audience? There being none, we'll close the public hearing and discussion in the council or a
Okay, I'll make the motion then, that we, where are we? Okay. That we amend the Code of Ordinances of the city of Nacogdoches, sorry, it goes to the other pages, as outlined in item 7D. Get it all.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, item 7E, that is not a public hearing. Consider approval of a contract bond between the city of Nacogdoches and Esco Incorporated for the 2023-2024 CDBG waterline improvements project, construction in the amount of $444,198.50.
Mayor, City Council, Case Opferman, Director of Public Works, and City Engineer. And I'm going to remember this clicker today. I'm bound and determined. So we did receive bids a couple weeks ago, actually on May 8th, for this work. As a reminder, in 2023, we received a grant under the 2324, actually, project round for the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program. And this is specifically for replacement of an eight-inch waterline on Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. And this is essentially from Shawnee Street all the way to the, into that line segment, almost to East Main, not quite that far. But this will replace approximately 2,600 linear feet of that line, which has been failing. We've had multiple breaks and issues over the years, and this is going to benefit approximately 270 residents, so we're very excited about this project. And we've kind of been trying to get it done for a while, so we're excited to see it come to fruition. Esco Inc. was our lowest of three bidders on May 8th, in the amount of $444,198.50. And we have not worked with them before. I'm not clicking.
It's all good.
I will never remember. We haven't worked with them before. They are from Jewett, Texas, but KSA has reviewed, reviewed their qualifications and recommends award based on their knowledge of this company. So we are looking to consider the award of the base bid in that amount of $444,198.50, and budget is available for this contract. So we'd happy to answer any questions after public comment.
We'll open it for discussion or a motion.
I make a motion that we approve.
I'd like to say one thing before we have the motion. That's right, our discussion. I just wanted to thank you all for applying for the CDBG dollars. I know they're difficult, community development block grants are complicated, and I think it's really, really great for our city to apply for outside dollars, particularly for the 270 residents, but for the whole city. So I wanted to thank you for doing that.
Finance did it, but...
Well, you're doing it too. Even in the bidding process, and even, you know, the federal government has its own interesting...
We always like, as I've said, we like to use other people's money before ours, even though this is sort of our money, since we're all taxpayers, but...
I just wanted to call attention to that.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll do what we can.
No, Mr. Huckabee, I'm sorry.
I make a motion that we approve item 6E, 7E, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. That concludes the regular part of the meeting tonight. Pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071, we will adjourn to executive session and be back shortly. Thank you very much for coming. Okay, we are, it is 7:55, and we're returning from executive session and pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071. No action taken. This concludes this evening's meeting. God bless this great city of Nacogdoches, Texas.